All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the March 20th, 2023 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone will please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just last week, the city of Crest Hill lost a longtime Crest Hill employee. Ms. Joanne Legursky passed away. We certainly want to offer our condolences to her four sons and their families. Joanne worked for the treasurer's office in the city of Crest Hill for 25 years, 1970s, 1980s, and I think part of 1990s. She was also an election judge in the city of Crest Hill for probably 50 years, and she was very active in church, community, events, all the time, first to volunteer. So I believe that we certainly want to thank her for her years of service to the city of Crest Hill. Again, we want to offer our condolences to her family, and I would ask for a moment of silence in the memory of Joanne Legursky. Roll call, please, Chris.
Please, Solomon.
Here.
John Hoffman.
President.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Dyke. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Clyde Giselle.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kewall.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on March 6, 2023. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the city council meetings held, minutes held on March 6, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, I would ask for council's concurrence to deviate to the agenda item under the mayor's report, a proclamation for the 175th anniversary of the INM Canal, Illinois and Michigan Canal National Heritage Area. We'll begin with the reading of the proclamation this evening with Alder Person Oberlin.
Proclamation, 175th anniversary of the INM Canal, Illinois and Michigan Canal National Heritage Area. The INM Canal opened in 1848 to connect the American heartland to New York Harbor in the east and to New Orleans in the south by water, thereby extending the Great Lakes to the Mississippi River. This water highway became an important transportation corridor, enhancing commerce trading. It brought people and capital to Illinois and was instrumental in the developing of the towns along its waterway.
Whereas the INM Canal, upon completion, linked the Illinois River with Lake Michigan, finalizing an all-water route from New York to New Orleans and establishing a water highway to the west, and...
Whereas the 96-mile INM Canal ushered in a new era in trade and travel and set the stage for Illinois to become our nation's most populous inland empire and home to the nation's greatest inland port, and...
Whereas the INM Canal gave birth to the growth of the Illinois cities of Chicago, Lamont, Crest Hill, Lockport, Seneca, Shanahan, Utica, Joliet, Ottawa, Morris, and LaSalle, Peru, and...
Whereas the Illinois Michigan Canal was designated as a national historic landmark in 1963 and our nation's first national heritage area in 1984, and the Canal Corridor Association designated the coordinating entity for the Illinois and Michigan Canal National Heritage Area in 2006, and the city of Crest Hill is within its boundaries designated by the U.S. Congress.
Whereas today visitors, residents, and schoolchildren can visit the Illinois and Michigan Canal National Heritage Area from Chicago to Peru and enjoy the historical, cultural, and natural resources, including its many trails, prairies, historic canal towns, museums, attractions, and festivals, along festivals such as experiencing a ride on a mule-pulled canal boat.
Now therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Crest Hill, do hereby proclaim April 2023 to April 2024, the year of the INM Canal.
In witness whereof, I have hearing to set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill, this 20th day of March 2023, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
Motion will be in order?
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alder Woman Giselle. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We are honored here tonight to have Crest Hill resident Cindy Valencia with us. She is part of the Canal Corridor Association with the INM Canal. So Cindy, on behalf of city council and all the residents of the city of Crest Hill, I certainly want to take this opportunity to say thank you for the relationship that we have had with the INM Canal for many, many years with the city of Crest Hill. It is good for us, it is good for the region, it brings a lot of visitors through all of the surrounding communities. We are very proud to have the INM Canal run through the city of Crest Hill also, and it is my privilege and honor, on behalf of all the residents of the city of Crest Hill, to present you with a copy of this proclamation for you and the office at Canal Corridor Association, residents.
Thank you, thank you. And on behalf of the Canal Corridor Association, I would like to say thank you to the city of Crest Hill for honoring this milestone and recognizing it. And of course, I would encourage all the citizens of Crest Hill and everyone else to learn more about the INM Canal and visit the INMCanal.org website to learn more and also to learn more about the National Heritage Area. The Canal Corridor Association has worked hard for this 175th anniversary, and we've come up with 175 things to do across the INM Canal, which encompasses over 60 communities. So you can learn more about the 175 things to do by visiting the Heritage Corridor Destination website at hcdestinations.org. Again, thank you for recognizing this milestone, and thank you.
Any comments from city council?
Thank you for all your work you do. You come here and you present. I know you present things for your women's organization as well, and I know those are all very time-consuming, so thank you for your volunteerism.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Okay, moving back to the top of the agenda, to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items, but fire away with any questions you might have.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the agenda tonight, we have three ordinances that would create the Webber Road Division Street TIP District. This is a follow-up to the public hearing we had a couple weeks ago. Unfortunately, we're going to have to defer these items. I sent an email out this afternoon. We learned today that the owner of the 74 acres was not able to get the type of survey recorded on time with Will County. We've been trying to get them to record that plaque for about a month, month and a half, and they went into the office today to record it, and we're told it's going to take five to 10 days. And our TIP attorney tells us that we cannot create the TIP district until that plaque is recorded. So this will have to be deferred to a next meeting, either the next meeting in April or the second meeting in April.
Do we need to have a motion to table it, Michael?
I would recommend that, just to...
I make a motion to table it until the meeting in which the document is ready to be voted on.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, to table the three ordinances under the city administrator's report for the creation of a TIP district on the 74 acres at Division and Webber Road. Questions or comments?
Just a quick... So this will not affect us, right?
No.
In the process?
No, we have 90 days to approve the ordinances.
So there's no delay?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item I have is change orders and proposal for the city center buildings. There are seven on your agenda for tonight. The first one is for a change order with Ramcor Inc. in the amount of $2,162. I would recommend a motion for that.
So moved.
$2,162.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alder Woman Giselle, for a change order with Ramcor Incorporated in the amount of $2,162.12. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
John Verche.
No.
Mr. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next one is a change order with decursee in the amount of $546. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Dyke for approval of a change order with decursee in the amount of $546. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next one is a credit with decursee in the amount of $1,170.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alder Woman Giselle for a change order with decursee in the amount of $1,170. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Did we get the one with Tim Electric?
No.
Oh, did we get that one? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Change order with Tim Electric in the amount of $410.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of a change order with Tim Electric in the amount of $410. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing. Any questions for city administrator?
What's the one item on here? It says proposal with decursee for $1,542. It's the last one in that list. That is...
Should I go?
It's one of the change orders that's in the packet.
So this is furnish and deliver a National Guard polycarbonate. This is for the police department, I believe, right? Can you answer that question? We have to have a window in that door so that we can... When we have a funeral in custody, we have to maintain contact, visual contact with that funeral. So that's the reason for the funeral.
So the door didn't have a window prior to this?
Correct.
Okey-doke.
So it's a full vision door for the juvenile lounge. There was some debate with our juvenile door that we may be able to maintain contact with it by putting on video, but according to DOC, their recommendation was it'd be better for us to have actual visual contact with that juvenile while they're in our custody. So that was kind of the difference.
Did that just come to light recently with an inspection, or...
It was...
A walk-through?
Two weeks ago, Department of Corrections came in and gave us the okay for our lockup facility, but that was their suggestion, was to do that, and just for liability reasons, we thought it was a good idea.
Any more on that?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two agenda items for you this evening. The first being a change order deduct with viscerine construction for $1,338,000. Ah, he said again, $1,338,041 with viscerine construction. This has been talked about a few times at the council level. After bids came in, we went back, value engineered, and I will say this does not take away any performance and the abilities of the new plant. It was just some of the redundancy as well.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for approving a change order with viscerine construction for a deduction of $1,338,041 for the improvements at the West Source Treatment Plant. Questions or comments?
Well, Mark, once again, I want to thank all of you who worked on this. That's a big number to find savings on, especially in these times, so thank you and whoever helped you with it.
Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The second agenda item I have for you this evening is approval of pay request number eight from Williams Brother Construction with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount of $83,398.97. This is number eight, and we're going to pay a long line of these. Just moving this along, send it down to IEPA to reimburse and pay them.
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alder Person Oberlin for approval of pay request number eight for Williams Brother Construction with direction to send it to IEPA for approval and dispersment for a total amount of $83,398.97. This is for the East Storage Treatment Plant Phosphorus Project. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That is all I have for you this evening.
Leave it open.
Bye-bye.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, I just have a little announcement if you can help me with that. Mark, we've discussed the committee service cleanup. We're going to start scheduling some dates to clean up the committee, and we can help some of the students with their community service. Can you touch on what you provide as public work if we start doing this?
Yeah, so Public Works in the past has always provided, anytime there's a cleanup, I think Alder Person Oberlin, you did a couple of these. If anybody wants to do a cleanup, we'll provide garbage bags, we'll provide safety vests. If you get the manpower, we'll let you, we'll give you safety vests and garbage bags, and then you just let us, the big orange ones, so we can see them very clearly. If you do it on the weekend, we'll pick them up on the following Monday, as long as they're in the parkway. So anybody, I know Alder Woman Giselle scheduled a couple in her area, but anybody who wants to do these, just reach out. We have boxes ready with the supplies, and we can schedule that, and we can help get that spread on social media as well.
Do they, do you have gloves too? Or no?
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I provide the gloves, but then the back, like I told you, we used to collect our own garbage and dump it in my house, so now it's good to know that Public Works can handle that.
As long as those orange bags are in the parkway, we'll send a mini dump truck around to the mall.
So, thank you. So we'll be announcing some of the dates.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on to city engineer, our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Yes, Mayor, I just have one item. Looking for a motion for the execution of the attached estimates. Estimated work proposals for two men in a truck to propose to provide moving services for the city center move for an exceed amount of $19,900. This was discussed at a previous workshop.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval with two men in a truck for city center moving. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And one other item, Mayor, I put on everybody's desk a copy of a letter that went out on the city's website today, and will be hand-delivered to all the residents on Center between Rose and Pasadena. We work with the school. Next week is their spring break. Contractor wants to get in there, try to get the work done in the school area while they're out on spring break. Contractor's been told that he can't start until Saturday after, and he has everything cleaned up by the following Saturday. So that's just for your information. If you have any questions, just reach out to me.
Any questions of city engineer?
Thanks, Ron.
Ron, just wanted to thank you and Mark for helping out that business there in Theodore and Center Street. St. Patty's Day is pretty important to her, and you're able to clear up her parking lot with some of that construction debris, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Community development, Maura will be here tomorrow if anybody has any questions. Our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any items on the agenda this evening, but I am willing to answer any questions.
Questions of police chief? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Mayor's report, we took care of the proclamation for the INM Canal. That was the only agenda item for myself. Just one announcement, our next meeting for the Memorial Day program coming up is going to be on April 11th at 11:00 here in this building. Also, we will be talking about the ceremony for May 29th, 2023, which will be held at our new city hall on City Center Boulevard. That will be on May 29th at 2:00 PM. We will have the Frankfurt Brass Band there. We'll be honoring World War II veterans, so if there are any World War II veterans living in the city of Crest Hill, please contact me. We certainly would like to have you join us for that ceremony. We certainly would like to honor you for your service to our country and our community. So with that, we have, I have no other items. I'll certainly try to answer any questions anybody may have.
Excuse me, Ray, could I ask you to repeat that on the Memorial Day? I couldn't find my pen.
Okay. It'll be on Monday, May 29th, 2023, at the new city center at 2:00 PM. Frankfurt Brass Band will be providing the entertainment. Guest speaker has not been finalized yet. I should have that in the next couple of weeks. We will have light refreshments after the ceremony. It should last about one hour. We certainly would like to honor any living World War II veterans that we have living in the city of Crest Hill. I know of three so far. So if there are any World War II veterans living in the city of Crest Hill, please contact myself or city hall. We certainly would like to invite you to the ceremony, which will last about one hour, so we can certainly honor you and thank you for your years of service to our country. Got it? All right. Okay, moving on, city clerk's report, our city clerk, Christine Verche Hall. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, and I have nothing to report tonight.
Questions of the clerk? Thank you.
Actually, I have a quick question. It's going to usually, it's coming up in May and hasn't been announced anytime soon.
We'll get it up on the website real soon.
Thank you.
To our city treasurer, and I have my pen. Glenn Conville.
Who's going to say something?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I apologize. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from February 27th of 2023 to March 12th of 2023 in the amount of $236,830.75. The only item that I look for action on is I seek approval of our list of bills in the amount, our listed bills through March 21st of 2023, in the amount of $1,022,72.38.
So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
No.
John Verche.
No.
Mr. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next one is a change order with decursee in the amount of $546. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Dyke for approval of a change order with decursee in the amount of $546. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next one is a change order with decursee in the amount of $546. So moved. Second. Motion by Alder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval with two men in a truck for city center moving. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewall.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Clyde Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I want to thank you all, and I'll answer any questions of the clerk.
Any questions of the treasurer? All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? Anyone? Committee liaison reports. Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? Begin with word one this evening, Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish everyone a happy first day of spring. Hopefully, things will be blooming here shortly, and everyone can enjoy some nicer weather. Thank you.
Alderman Verche?
Nothing to report.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alder Woman Giselle?
I have a lot to announce, Mayor, so stay with me. Mobile pantry will be held on May 6th from 12 to 2. We changed it from 10 to 12 from, they asked us if we can change it to 12 to 2. Place will be determined. So far, will be held at the library. City Hall parking lot will be done, I'm sorry, White Oak Library, thank you. City Hall drive-in will be done, then we'll move it to City Hall, so I hope we'll get some dates soon for that. I'm happy to announce that the eighth grade volleyball girls, they, we went to state. Fortunately, they came short, but it was a big pride to see them going that far. The last time Richland Regional won championship and sector was in 2011, so it's a big accomplishment for the girls to come that far. So I'm hoping Mayor will do a proclamation for them. I already gathered some information for you. And also, we went two weeks ago to Tinley Park for the symphonic band, and the eighth grade and seventh graders, they won again state, so we're going to state April 29th, so let's wish them the best of luck. So Richland is busy lately. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Alder Person Oberlin?
Nothing at this time, except congratulations to those children at Richland. That's quite an accomplishment for both of them. Thank you, Claudia, for letting us know. Thank you.
Alderman Sepiti?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Yeah, definitely, congrats to the Richland Eagles on all their successes. Just another plug for the Crest Hill Lions Club Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 8th, at 12:00 noon. Free community event that's open to kids 10 and under. So I hope you can make it there. It's going to be located at...